Oh, we're faster down here. Stocked your guys down there.
Your face.
I was using on the power.
That's right, that's right. Exactly.
Okay. Well, you have to hit present. I don't have that on my head.
You too, you too. My goodness.
You guys are getting all geared up, aren't you? I got a notice from Kim that there's no primary election.
Okay, it just, it's just a delay. Okay, make sure you mark present, assuming you are present.
I am. That's a good thing. See, those guys, they're slow. Not tech savvy guys, you know.
Here, Miss Keegel.
Yo, you should just go home.
Did it work? No. What is it saying?
It's working, but, because I pressed that and I thought...
Did you move me over to the council?
I can restart this if you'd like.
When you moved over, right?
I don't know if that's the answer.
The day is the end.
Here.
Alderman Wolfe.
Here.
And Mayor Cheverati.
Here.
We have a quorum present. Statement of public notice? This meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting law.
I'm sorry.
Communications from the mayor, other than happy new year, we're in 2019. Neil has disappeared.
No, it's just gray.
It was a great holiday, I'm sure, for all.
What's that, seven at present?
It was long, so I don't think anybody's complaining.
Oh, so.
It says seven present, right?
Public comment.
Yeah. Well, because the mayor is present.
If anybody wishes to speak, it must be about something on the agenda.
It just keeps popping up with that sign, huh?
Well, not only that, it kind of filled out here.
You get three minutes to speak and you need to fill out a form and bring it up here, so I don't know if anybody wishes to speak. Where are the forms?
I'm gonna say reset, but just so we don't.
They're back there, they have to fill them out.
Can we throw it out the window?
Just one, yeah.
Okay, so we're not gonna use it at all?
Yeah, it's just broke.
Okay.
That looks good.
At least you're fully charged. Neil did it.
Yeah, right.
There it is.
So, we're not using it again? You also have to be a resident or taxpayer of the city, and I assume you are.
Not roll call.
Oh, just not the roll call?
I think it's that tablet.
Okay. Do you do a voice mail?
Yeah, everybody's own.
We're not.
Okay.
We're just not gonna use this today.
It just said it was 100% on the power.
Okay.
I think this tablet's just...
I'm looking at what the recommendation was. It got buried in that recommendation.
Did you? I've been doing that. Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Was it?
Okay, I'm gonna call the common council meeting to order Tuesday, January 8th, 2019
No, just, yeah, just go back.
Right, right. Thank you.
What are we waiting for here?
You can just bring it up here. at 6:03 PM.
Reroute these things.
And you might as well come up right away. Is the microphone on, Adam? We've gotta do voice roll call. We've got another technical difficulty, so roll call. Alderman Madden.
Here.
Alderman Kubaki.
Here.
Alderman Engelhardt. Can you give us the...
Here.
Alderman Kapusta.
Here.
Alderman Borgman.
Here.
And then just state your name and address, and then I'll start the clock for the three minutes.
Okay. My name is Gary Qualheim, W194 S7028, Hillendale Drive, Meskego, Wisconsin. This is in reference to the Hillendale project. I'm opposed to Bike Path. I am all for just keeping it rural with a minimal impact. I was born and raised here in Meskego. Spent almost my entire life here. I used to play in a house that I purchased presently and owned and lived in for the last 35 years. And this is a quaint, nice country road. It always has been. Things started to change when they did the College Avenue Racine Corridor, when they put the roundabout, then the traffic was diverted down Hillendale, increased the traffic there, not in the school, increased the traffic there. But still, to take all those trees out changed the look of the whole road, the streets, and how what we're used to living with is a crime. And we've gone around and done surveys with the neighbors, Melanie, and most of us are all opposed, that's why we're all here. And that's all I have to say about it.
Thank you very much. And we didn't receive any other requests, so we'll move on to the agenda items. Consent agenda. First of all, does anyone wish to pull out the, this particular item, 005? Yes?
I'd like to.
Okay, that will, 005 resolution will be pulled out. So Jill, you can read the others.
Okay. Review and authorize the placement of temporary racecourse markers for Little Meskego Yacht Club. Approval of operator licenses. Resolution 1, 2019. Resolution to approve the suburban mutual assistance response teams agreement. Resolution 2, 2019. Approval of limited term conservation easement. Resolution 3, 2019. Approval of reduction of letter of credit for edge water heights, phase one subdivision. Resolution 4, 2019. Approval of reduction of letter of credit for Meskego LLC. Resolution 6, 2019. Approval of extension of the loan term for Delta Family Restaurant Incorporated. Resolution 7, 2019. Approval of agricultural lease agreement with Jack King for the Kelsey Drive Conservation Site. Resolution 8, 2019. Approval of agricultural lease agreement with Robert Stigler for the Badgershire Preserve. Resolution 9, 2019. Approval of cleaning services contract with Gibb Building Maintenance.
Move to approve and grows.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Those, all the consent agenda items minus 005 are approved unanimously. So, resolution 005, 2019. Resolution as the Public Works and Safety Committee recommendation for the Hillendale Drive reconstruction project. We need a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. Thank you. Discussion.
Scott, I was wondering if we could have some background on this one?
Sir, just to kind of give you an idea, we are going through the process of designing the Hillendale Road reconstruction. We had a public information meeting that, that was out there earlier in 2018. We invited all the people along the road. We had a lot of talks about it. We showed two concepts. One, more of a rural kind of cross-section that's out there. That's what's out there now. Ditches along the road, no curb and gutter. The second one was an urban one. We, we just ran it through with curb and gutter. Usually that comes out with storm sort. In both options, we provided a trail along the west side of the road. Why we provided a trail along the west side of the road is if you look at the parks and conservation plan, it was a planned loop in there. So, we just followed what the plan was and we showed a trail on there. Why we showed two examples is first public information meeting, we provide it to the public and we get all these great kind of comments back. I believe we were up to over like 63 surveys back and I think 30 people for sure showed up for the meeting. It was a great response for everything. After the first public information, we gathered all the information and then we presented to the Public Works Committee. So, what by far the best way to first approach it was, we went with a rural cross-section and in some areas we'll use curb and gutter. The reason why is, one, doing full urban for the whole way, curb and gutter, most expensive thing in the world, doesn't justify it in the needs there to do it. A rural cross-section will work. In some areas where we use curb and gutter is, a perfect example is, if you look at the three houses just north of the school on the west side, their front yard is so close to the road, I, I can't get a ditch in there. And, and they've had consistent drainage issues. And that's through three or four houses, I would recommend putting a curb and gutter in there. It limits us taking their property. It also solves the drainage issue that's along that area. The other motion, the big motion that probably is the most controversial is whether or not we put a, a trail in there. And that trail is kind of like similar to what we see all trails all over the place. It, it's more just an asphalt six-foot wide trail. The recommendation from the Public Works and Safety Committee after hearing everyone respond was to not include the trail at that time. Again, if you look at the future plan and, and go to the park system, please be aware too, there, there is a, gosh, they call it a distant trail along Racine Avenue as well, if you look at where this is. So, there's a planned loop on Hillendale, there's a distant trail planned on Racine, and then the loop would then go both on College and then Martin around. So, that's just one of the things why, why we do it. Now, another thing too, and I'm just gonna throw this out, when you reconstruct a road, doing a trail at that time, probably the most cost-effective way. I'm letting you know, if we'd ever have to come back and we do a trail on this road, just doing a trail, it'll probably be twice or three times the amount of cost when you do the road. And that's just because when you're doing large amounts of asphalt with the road, it's just cheaper to do it at that time. And that's just it in a nutshell, and why it's going to committee is because I just need to know the direction and then I let the consultant know, and then we're not wasting money of designing a trail that we're not gonna build. So, any other questions or highlights?
I'd like to add besides the public input, I know the alderman of the district, John Engelhardt, did a lot of research, so it was really more about, which I, some of us here were there, but in June 13th, 2011, that actually on Hillendale, the plan just before this, there wasn't a trail on Hillendale, and it got added by the previous alderman, really without any public input or anything else, but it was, and the purpose was strictly to provide some sort of connection to Badgershire Preserve. So, I just want to throw that out there. It had sort of a different purpose than I think the original loop that was there and the loop can still happen. And correct me if I'm wrong, I just wanted to clarify that. That was probably more the reason, am I right?
Yeah, and then it appeared in the 17 plan, I guess.
17 to 21.
Yeah, it was carried forward into that.
Carried forward, mhm.
But what you also give supporting evidence here, the trail recommendations with the additions from the original trail plan, I don't find where this one was added. It's not in your statement here. And so, I'm, I'm at a little bit mystery when it actually was approved by anybody. Yet it showed up on the maps eventually.
Any other questions?
Well, I, I'd just like to figure out when we changed our, when we changed directions here. Because ever since I've been on, on council, we've had three criteria for trails. One was, it was a business. We wanted to connect all our businesses, which is pretty well, pretty well complete with the Janesville Road trails and whatnot that we have. The second criteria was we were gonna try to connect our schools. And the third thing was we were gonna try to direct our parks. In 2012, we, we built the, along Woods, along Woods Road from Racine to Quietwood. That was driven by the school or by, by concerns for children going to school. 2014, we drilled it along Woods Road, or along Racine, from Woods to Culvers, again driven by school. In 2017, we did it along Woods Road from Racine to Windover, which connects the school to the, the high school to that, to that subdivision. 2018, we did it along Racine Road, we did the Woods Road to Woodland subdivision, which allows those children access to the high school. And 2019, this year and next year, we're planning on building one along Bay Lane for Jane, from Janesville to Woods Road, which is again for schools. When did we, and so, so now we're saying because we have a school, we're not gonna build one, or because we have objections to, to, to building along that road, we're not going to connect this school, this school's gonna be somehow not as important as the others. And also the, the playground facilities or the, the park facilities that are at, 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 at the school there. There's, there's a, there's a lot of summer usage of the ballparks there. Those are, those are regular league ballparks in the back, and there's a lot of kids and a lot of tra, a lot of foot traffic in the evenings going to those baseball games, which is all, all along that road. So, you know, it is not only a school, it is also a park. So, it meets two of three criteria that we've used in the past to build, build trails. I realize that this is an inconvenience to the people. I realize that there's gonna be a lot of trees taken down. I realize that that is a part of every trail we've built. We have, Test Corners was probably the, the shining example of, of losing trees.
And a lot of objections.
And, and, and we, we've always had people say, not in my backyard, not in my front yard. But we, we've, we've kind of looked beyond that complaint to, to try to build these, these trails that, that, that meet our criteria. So, if we're gonna start changing this criteria, then maybe we shouldn't even be building the one for Bay Lane. I mean, what the heck? If we're not gonna build them for schools anymore, maybe for, maybe we should save our money in 2019 and 2020 and not, not even do Bay Lane. So, somebody's gotta tell me where, where we, why we changed our mind and, and what our new, what our new design criteria are.
If I could jump in, because with the roughly eight years here, we've never had any true criteria. I want to clarify, a lot of things have been said and the criteria's changed in every scenario. And I'm glad what I didn't hear, and I don't want to disrespect anybody, but safety is the number one thing I say we cannot base it on, because otherwise we have a trail on every road. So, that safety is what we used to use, and when I say, say some people would use it on council. Then it got to be, somebody decided schools was a good idea to put them there, and then somebody decided to get to the parks. There's never been anything concrete by the entire body. It's been a moving target. I'd like to finish.
Mayor, you are absolutely 100% wrong. If you, if you've attended any of the trail meetings that were hailed, had in the rec, the rec, the old rec and park department that we had.
Committee.
Those were always the criteria that were used, always. And, and it's not more, it's not 18 years, it's more than 18 years, ma'am. Much more.
I said eight for the time that I've been here. But as far as schools, I do want to say this, the high school I do think has always been critical, because you have athletes there that they use the trails for training, and that's why the school district has always requested and pushed for that. They did ask at Bay Lane as well, because there was a lot of foot traffic, because those kids and bike traffic were old enough where parents felt comfortable to let them traverse to school without being on a bus. I know that the elementary schools, they're, they're not really allowed to, per the school rules. Bay Lane, you're correct, is no longer middle school. Now, that's a whole different story, because we've moved forward, but maybe that would have changed, had we not known that the status of it did. But that's here and there. But the criteria is always unique. Everybody looks at each one a little differently. I mean, I have no skin in the game. I just want to clarify, there has never been anything really concrete. It's always been kind of a moving target. So, with that, I'm gonna let everybody else talk, because I have no skin in the game on this.
Alderman Engelhardt.
It's been my understanding that the idea of kids coming to school without being delivered to school is not acceptable at the elementary school. So, it really serves no purpose in regards to the school.
Go to school?
For school. I'd like to enter for the record what was minutes from Park and Recreation Board, June 13th, 2011. Director Anderson announced that he had received an email from Alderman Sostyak regarding a trail plan to gain eventual access to the Bors property. That's the driving force behind this question. This would involve a trail along Hillendale and Field Drives. It is being proposed to include this in the Parks and Open Space Plan, which should come before the board in October. He mentioned that all trail sections are prioritized. It's up to the common council on what they are willing to fund. Therefore, the aldermen should be discussing it if it is something they want to do upfront and part of the borrowing plan. When they borrow the funds, they get the access in right way, rather than having to wait for the access to the property. Mr. Ladoo inquired if there was enough room along Hillendale for the trail. Director Anderson was advised by Director Monkle that it would be easier to go in by way of Hillendale, that's Field Drive will be more difficult. Mr. Ladoo suggested going in the back way and possibly having the cost recouped by the developer. Mr. Holbut asked if the property owners along Hillendale were advised that there may be a trail going along the front of the property. It would be advisable for the aldermen to let them know. Discussion of this item will continue in October meeting for inclusion in the Parks and Open Space Plan. Couldn't find any record after that.
But the moral of the story is that it's on there. There's, there's a plan for a, a trail, for the loop.
That was a recommendation from the, from the park committee at that time, and it appears a lot of the driving force was to hook up to Badgershire.
Yes.
Now, we do have...
Is it on the maps?
We do have a long-term plan for the loop, College out to Y and down Y, and that's still in place.
And one of the things I recall from the minutes is that the, to connect to Badgershire, there's a potential. It said it could be looked at, is development on Racine Avenue could provide, commercial development could provide a trail in, so that's an option as well.
Well, I look at Test Corners as an example, and, and that goes down to Woods, and it's supposed to be connected straight up to the roundabout now. And that has not happened, so there's still potential for that. That's kind of where this one sits. I think that Kevin Kubaki, Alderman Kubaki, pushed pretty heavily for the one in front of the high school or next to the high, it was in front of the high school, right? That's where it started. And also on the side, and I, I believe a lot of that is safety-driven for the high school. I think that's what we talked about at that point. I think we talked about that for Bay Lane as well, as a safety issue. I, I realize that, you know, the mayor said you could talk about all these being a safety issue, but, but the time of construction is the time to look at these for the safety issues. Test Corners was driven also by safety because of the turn on Sep, there was a lot of discussions about the turn there. A lot of discussions, a lot of people against it, a lot of people talking about the tree's gonna disappear. The trees were coming down, a lot of them, they saved some of them, went around them. When they go through and they dig the streets up and redo the ditches, they, they dig their roots up and it kills the trees, so they take the trees out. If they're in a, a bad visibility area, they take the trees out. I remember everybody wanted these trails. I, I've been the one that's always been against the trails. I never really wanted the trails. But now that they're going in and we have a half-complete spot of stuff happening, why do we want to leave it half-done? Why do we want to leave our kids exposed? I mean, there's more, there's summer schools, there's all kinds of stuff. Kids go to school different ways, so I, I don't know what's acceptable and what's not at a school, but kids ride bikes, kids walk, there's summer school, there's after-school activities, there's all kinds of things that people are gonna be in front of that school with. Test Corners, again, there was a lot of objections, and since then, and, and walking door-to-door, talking to people after that, a lot of people like it now. And, you know, here I am, a, a anti-trail guy, which has not been a, a secret on this committee, right? But when I voted no on trails, everybody else voted yes, and it got to the point where these trails are going in and they're connecting, and they're starting, they're starting to make sense now, so I started voting yes, because, because we need to finish it. And, and, you know, we, we can say safety is not a, a factor, but it's definitely on the plate when you look at the, at the road and the schools. It, it makes sense. My point about Woods not connecting to Test Corners is the same thing about Hillendale not connecting to Racine's trail. Eventually, it will happen, you know, when, I can't tell you, but the way the trails are going, they, they should probably be completed. And, you know, we should make this a, a complete, complete thing. I mean, we put all this money and time and effort into doing this. I, I, you know, I always said, I moved out here not to have sidewalks in front of my house, I understand that. And what we did on, on, on Test Corners is we, we did a concession, I think originally they wanted 12-foot, it went to 10, and we got it down to six-foot trail, and that's actually what's going in in Hillendale, is a six-foot trail. Am I correct, Scott? And...
There can be no comments from the public, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So, so, you know, it gets close to houses and whatever, you know, and some curb and gutter went in on, on Test Corners as well, and that was a partial thing, you know. I have to say, unfortunately, as a community, we're growing as a, as a community, and, and we don't want to be like a city, we're gonna do most everything not to be like a Milwaukee or something, but in certain circumstances, to finish what started and to provide safety to our, our kids in front of a school is, is, is a priority, I would think. I, I find it ironic that we vote yes for all the other trails, and all of a sudden we want to vote no for this one. And, and, you know, I don't know all the reasoning's behind it, you can dig back in the past and things change. You can look in the meetings however you want to look in the past meetings, different people were there compared to now. I just, I just feel that we, we need to, Neil took some of the thunder that I was thinking. I, I'm totally on the side of the people, I, I usually vote with the people, but I, I have to say that I think it's, it, it'll be a good thing if it goes in. I really believe that.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
You mentioned Woodland Creek, Alderman. Woodland Creek, the reason for Woodland Creek was twofold. Number one, the people in that very large subdivision, Woodland Creek, wanted that, that trail, because they have to cross a river to get to the school. Okay, there's a little different situation there. I, I look at this trail, and I've attended all the meetings and met a lot of the people that, that are, that are here tonight. These are the people who are gonna ser, are, are closest to that school, whose families are gonna be attending those walkable events there. I guess I look at all these trails on a very individual basis. We're here to serve the people. And, and some areas make sense to have a trail. To me, this doesn't, doesn't make sense to have a trail there. If you, if you recall the maps that were associated with the trail on the west side of this road, some of those trails came very, very close to people's homes. I, I don't know what happened in Test Corners, I, I don't recall what was, what was done down there, but the other trails that were coming from the, from the west side of the high school and from the, or from the north side of the high school and the south side of the high school made a whole lot of sense.
Were, were they on the map already? Were they proposed to go in there? Or were they added in? I believe the last one, last one was added in.
Woodland Creek was added in.
They were added in.
It was an add-in.
So, that's what I'm talking about, past meetings and whatever, things change.
Well, they do change. I mean, that's...
But we haven't listened to the people in the past. A lot of these trails...
I waited for you. When you had the floor, I waited for you. If you wait for me, please, I appreciate that.
No, we can't from the public, I'm sorry, that's the rules.
These trails are, are dynamic, the city's dynamic, but each trail has got to take on its own logical course. And in my mind, this trail has no logical course. It, it makes no sense that the people who would be served by this trail don't want the trail.
It doesn't matter.
And please, no, no clapping. Alderman Madden.
And I do recall at our public works meetings, one of the things that we discussed was the trails were meant to connect...
If you recall the maps that were associated with the trail on the west side of this road, some of those trails came very, very close to people's homes. I don't know what happened in Test Corners. I don't recall what was done down there. But the other trails that were coming from the west side of the high school and from the north side of the high school and the south side of the high school made a whole lot of sense.
Were they on the map already? Were they proposed to go in there? Or were they added in? I believe the last one, last one was added in.
Woodland Creek was added in.
They were added in.
It was an add-in.
So that's what I'm talking about, past meetings and whatever, things change.
Well, they do change. I mean, that's...
But we haven't listened to the people in the past. A lot of these trails...
I waited for you. When you had the floor, I waited for you. If you wait for me, please, I appreciate that.
No, we can't from the public, I'm sorry, that's the rules.
These trails are dynamic, the city's dynamic. But each trail has got to take on its own logical course. And in my mind, this trail has no logical course. It makes no sense that the people who would be served by this trail don't want the trail.
Doesn't matter.
And please, no clapping. Alderman Madden?
And I do recall at our Public Works meetings, one of the things that we discussed was the trails were meant to connect. And this trail wouldn't connect to anything. It's not, there's not another trail coming into it. There's thought of maybe 10 years from now. By then, this one would probably have to be redone. I think, as Alderman Kubaki said, there's nothing connecting to it. It would really be just for the people in that community. And they've made it abundantly clear they're not interested.
Well, I find that kind of ironic since you were sitting on the Test Corners Committee at the time, and they made it pretty clear they didn't want it there, and you put it in. And that connects to nowhere either. That connects to nowhere. Where's it connect to? Jamesville Road?
Right.
And where else?
It connected, and it's going to connect it during.
Well, you could say that about the same thing. You're going to.
But we don't have any plans to connect anything to Hillendale.
And you voted yes.
I did, it was needed there.
Well, I find that kind of ironic. And I find the same thing with Kevin, very ironic that you push for that one and push other trails out of the way to put that one in in your area. So I find that ironic as well, so.
Well, I'd like to point out that Martin Drive Trail was also voted down.
There's been a lot of trails that people objected to and have gone in.
You've got to start somewhere first, right? I mean...
Alderman Ingleheart?
I still find that this is at our discretion rather than being in concrete. And I also find that there is a complete lack of support in that area for it. But I believe we have someone in the audience who works at Mill Valley. And if that individual was allowed to tell us, they might be able to enlighten us what the real policy is there.
That you're, we can't go out of the, we don't...
We have sometimes asked someone for a direct comment.
If you want a direct...
I want a direct comment if that's possible.
We need a motion in a second, then, if somebody wants a direct comment.
I would move for a comment about someone. I believe there's someone out here that can enlighten us on the policy of Mill Valley.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Melanie Sinner. I actually live on Hillendale Drive as well, West 194, South 6961. I worked at Mill Valley for 15 years. The ball diamonds that we used to have at Mill Valley are no longer there. There is one ball diamond, there is no more leagues, there are no ball games at Mill Valley anymore. So I'm not sure where you got your information from. As far as the bike path goes, the kids are not allowed to ride their bikes to school. They're not allowed to walk to school. They are allowed to take the bus to school, or their parents can take them to school, or a guardian. I mean, it sounds like the greatest idea, it really does. But that bike path, my issue, and I know I'm not supposed to be talking about anything, but it's the drainage. The drainage, the wetlands on Hillendale Drive, the drainage that's going to become my problem when it's blocked from my neighbor's yard, we have a stream.
Is this about the policy or about the drain?
I think you answered our question, we have to leave it at that. Otherwise, it's not fair to everybody else.
But for my uninformed guys, dude, the drainage is...
Thank you very much. Thank you.
You know, I'll comment on the drainage since she's brought it up. Test Corners is a terrible drainage area. And once you put the road in, and Scott, you can attest to this, once you put the road in, it's all engineered properly, and it'll be better than it was before. I mean, that's the idea of doing part of this, right? Is to correct the drainage. And that's what he did on Test Corners.
Yeah, the idea is, we're not going to add a pond, we can't add, oh, sorry. We're not going to do a pond, there's no pond.
The school's added ponds.
The school's added two ponds, which has helped with the drainage. When you do a road, I'm going to look at these ditches. These ditches are probably not up to code, they're not up to standard, they've been eroded away, they're filled with sediment. It's like, when you go look at New Moreland Road, all those ditches are brand-new. My job is to make sure that all the drainage is handled. And in some cases, why we said curb and gutter is, if I can't get the ditches to work, and we're going to use curb and gutter and some storm sewer. That's my goal of when I do a road. Drainage is a big issue. It's always been a big issue out there. We've gotten a lot of calls that it goes from one side of the road to the other side of the road, and everyone on the east side has been affected for drainage. It's part of the road plan, it's part of a road project to look at.
And that's one reason why you're looking at the west side versus the east side, I believe, right?
Correct. And also, if you would put a trail on the east side of the road, it drops off too much. The cost of putting a trail on the east side of the road is just too expensive. Second, school's not on the east side of the road. I'm just letting you, I'm just, I'm just being honest. I mean, and more from an engineering design, it's a flatter area to do it. I can't, if I do it on the east side, I would have to bring in so much fill, and it'd be a structural trail. It'd be, you guys would laugh at me for how much a trail would cost, so. From an engineer's standpoint.
And I know keeps being said about the school, but Alderman Ingleheart did the research in the minutes from that Parks meeting, didn't talk about the school. The purpose was for a connection to Badisher Preserve.
But we brought that up after with other schools and other meetings. So things progress and change as they go along. And, you know, we'll go back to Test Corners again. When I'm out going knocking door-to-door, and I'm going up woods, and there's not a trail on that side, those people are telling me they don't want one there. So what are we going to do? That's a connector to the other part of the trail. You guys are going to sit here and say, "Well, people don't want it, we're not going to connect that." I bet you're going to change your tune, and you'll probably vote for it, just like you voted for Test Corners.
And I'm in favor of a trail being on Y and through college and making that loop at the appropriate times.
Voted yes for every trail, John, except this one.
No, Martin Drive didn't go through.
Did we delay that one? Martin Drive.
Well, when you don't put it through, it's delayed.
Martin Drive is...
It's still on the plane.
One at a time.
It's still ready to go.
Martin Drive cannot be built because there's a house in the way. There's a historic house that's in the right-of-way of the city. And there's no way to get around the house. You'd have to buy a historic structure and tear it down to build a trail, which is just unthinkable.
Martin Drive would then connect with college, which would then connect to the far end to Racine.
I can't...
So the whole link is...
Yeah, the link would be Martin Drive to college to Racine.
So the part of the link's already going to be missing, is what you're saying?
So in other words, each trail carries its own characteristics. That one couldn't be done.
Individually.
Each one is an individual, have to look at it that way. And I know Alderman Wolf, he tried to classify all the trails as one, they're not.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, with that, please cast your vote. Well, we do roll call. We got to do a roll call, excuse me. We don't have the little machine tonight. Alderman Madden?
Yes.
Alderman Kubaki?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yes, meaning rural roadway, no trails. Yes.
Alderman Ingleheart?
Yes, as the resolution stands.
Alderman Capusta?
Yes.
Alderman Borgman?
No.
Alderman Hamel?
Yes.
Alderman Wolf?
No.
Are five in favor and two opposed.
So it is approved with no trail.
There you go.
Okay, thank you. We will move on to unfinished business.
Ordinance 1426, an ordinance to amend Chapter 30, Section 30-1 of the Municipal Code of the City of Muskego regarding polling places. Second reading.
We need a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Ordinance 1426 is approved. Ordinance 1427, an ordinance to amend the zoning map and 2020 comprehensive plan of the City of Muskego B4 to M1, Minin, D&amp;J and Sons LLC. Second reading, we need a motion?
Move to approve.
Any discussion? Who seconded it, Kevin? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is approved unanimously. Review of committee reports.
Finance Committee, November 27th. Public Works and Safety Committee, October 16th.
License approval.
Approval of temporary Class B license to sell fermented malt beverages.
Don't close the door, don't close the door!
For Special Olympics of Wisconsin, for the Muskego Polar Plunge to be held on February 10th at the Muskego County Park.
Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved.
Approval of temporary Class B license to sell fermented malt beverages and intoxicating liquor for the Knights of Columbus to be held March 30th, 2019, at St. Leonard School.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Voucher approval.
Motion to approve utility vouchers in the amount of $11,667.54.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved.
Motion to approve tax vouchers in the amount of $10,367.06.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved.
Motion to approve general fund vouchers in the amount of $691,661.68.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved.
And motion to approve wire transfers for payroll transmittals for the amount of $353,755.41.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Closed session.
Following conclusion of consideration of the above portion of its regularly scheduled agenda, the common council will meet to vote on a motion to convene in closed session for discussion or action relative to the sale of the Muskego Parks Garage properties and to take such further action as may be necessary and appropriate with respect to such matters. A closed session for the above purpose is authorized pursuant to the provisions of 19.85, Pren 1, Pren E of the Wisconsin statutes, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Upon conclusion of the closed session, the common council will convene in open session to consider its public agenda, including motions to recommend approval or rejection of the above-listed deliberations or any of the public agenda items that have not been acted upon.
Is there a motion?
Motion to go into closed session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, we need a roll call, sorry. Alderman Madden?
Yes.
Alderman Kubaki?
Yes.
Alderman Ingleheart?
Yes.
Alderman Capusta?
Yes.
Alderman Borgman?
Yes.
Alderman Hamel?
Yes.
Alderman Wolf?
Yes.
There are seven in favor. Thank you. We will now move into the other room again. I know, I need it. Back into open session. New business. Resolution 10, 2019, acceptance of offer of purchase, the Parks Garage property. I will read this. Whereas in June of 2018, the common council directed staff to begin the process to rezonate market for sale, and market for sale, the city-owned properties located on Pioneer Drive. Whereas the P1-zoned portion of the tax was rezoned to B3 with the adoption of ordinance 1422 in November of 2018. And whereas a formal appraisal of both properties was obtained by the city in 2018. And whereas the properties consisting of the former Parks Garage and an adjacent vacant lot were listed for sale in November of 2018. And whereas three formal offers to purchase were received. And whereas two of the offers were equally advantageous to the city from a legal standpoint, resulting in the city attorney, Judge Wartrell, presenting a similar counteroffer to the two potential buyers. And whereas, while both potential buyers verbally responded to the city's counteroffer, the most advantageous offer for the city was submitted by Eric Huckstorf, Duane Sweeney, and David Alessi, for a purchase price of $280,000 in cash and a sale of the property in an as-is condition. And whereas city attorney Wartrell prepared a formal written counteroffer, which was signed by both parties with the sale being subject to the approval of common council. Now therefore, be it resolved, the common council of the City of Muskego does hereby accept the offer of purchase submitted by Eric Huckstorf, Duane Sweeney, and David Alessi for the price of $280,000. Be it further resolved, the mayor and the clerk treasurer are authorized to execute the necessary document to close the sale, and the city attorney is authorized to make substantive changes as may be necessary in order to preserve the general intent thereof. We need a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is approved unanimously. City official reports, nothing this evening. Communications, miscellaneous business, does anyone have an update?
Nope.
Nope.
Little Muskego held their meeting this week, so.
Oh, okay.
Middle of the winter, so there's not much action there.
No, there isn't. And I'm doubting there's much ice.